While. A work session of September seventeen, twenty twenty four to orders. I want to welcome all of those who are present and online. Work sessions for council to receive information and discuss items or issues affecting the city. We do not vote in work session. And after the presentation, there will be a discussion by council and after that discussion, we will invite the public to comment. And then we'll come about council for any further. Advice regarding the discussion with that. I'll turn it over to Helen Asimov, our finance director.
Well, great. If I can say this one thing.
Okay.
First of all, I want to thank Mayor Council for having this special work session. As we get closer to the end of the year. And we look at the uncertainty of some of our contracts. I think it's necessary that we have this meeting of you. To get your thoughts. And desires on prioritization of resources available to the ARPA funds and what we should do with those. But they're mainly here. So I want to thank you for your time. Staff has put a lot of time in on this and as Alan will demonstrate to you when he gets through the end of this presentation. These scenarios that he presents are not an either or. They are very dynamic in nature and once we understand what your priorities are. He will structure and ordinance. To the effect that will allow for some discretion to take place with your prioritization in mind. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Alan.
Good morning, Mayor Council. What kind of available ARPA funds discussion? Start with a little background that we've told us before, but. As part of the coronavirus state and local federal fiscal recovery funds authorized by the American Rescue Plan Act. ARPA delivered three hundred fifty billion dollars to state local governments. Treasury released an interim final rule in August of twenty twenty three. And under this program recipients must be obligated all award funds by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. The expend funds by December thirty first, twenty twenty six. And just so. A reminder about the definition of obligation by the treasury. They define obligation as an order placed for property and services. And entering into contracts, some wars and similar transactions that require payment. How which is not adopted budget or budget amendment. And those are the two deadlines that we had to make as far as spending by December twenty twenty six and obligated by twenty twenty four. Any funds that are not obligated are required to be returned back to treasury. We mentioned before, the goal of not returning the ARPA funds back to treasury. City manager mentioned, we do have. We came across some available ARPA funds. We funded it, you know, there's just three thousand. Or the Cowan Street drainage project in our fiscal twenty five budget. Given the uncertainty circumstances, it's not possible to proceed with the Cowan Street drainage project at this time. Thanks to the ARPA funding available to apply to other parties. The total available ARPA funds to be operated is eight hundred sixty three thousand dollars. And Jada's already promoted that other data on the Cowan Street project.
Counsel, it's not that we don't want to proceed with Cowan Street, the drainage street shape project. It's just the timeline for getting that project out to be. And under contract, it's not going to work with the requirements for the funding. We are at least another six months out before we're going to be at that point due to right away acquisitions. And that's. I've been an ongoing thing with with some projects the county's been dealing with. You all saw how long it took us to get to where we are with Allison Road. So it's better to just go ahead and make this move. At this point, decide how we can best utilize this funding.
We came up with, the city staff came up with some funding scenarios. We drafted various funding scenarios that focus on capital projects related to public safety, quality of life. And which also allows the council strategic plan. And city manager also requested departments to provide a prioritized list of unfunded requirements. These department requirements were integrated into a single list, the suggested prioritization by staff. We'll start with. First funding scenario. And this is where we. Have additional thirty thousand dollars for waterfront park consulting services. Remember, we have. Our A budget has been approved, one two hundred fifty thousand dollar amount for consulting services. This will be an additional two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then the remaining balance will be for waterfront park improvements of six hundred thirteen thousand. We do understand that the waterfront park improvements may not be available to be obligated by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. That's based on, once we get the consulting services recommendations. Although arguably the most favorable scenario is also arguably the least feasible at this time.
I was curious, what what the initial two hundred fifty thousand that will be allocated? What's that based on?
And that's what ARPA funds, that's that's kind of the estimate of.
Well, I got this money. How did you arrive at? So what's the other to the estimates for the initial two fifty?
Yeah, that's kind of be rest of consultants kind of all are.
So if if the initial. Estimate was two fifty, then would you base the initial two fifty on?
Which was kind of. So another additional map to cover that entire contract.
This would be under the assumption that that the project could be far enough along that it may require additional. Consultation fees or services or perhaps a design. As as noted in the bottom note, it's it's the most favorable option because we definitely might pull apart. It's also probably really feasible to get that's not correct.
So that would take the consulting to the next level.
Yes.
Please, what is this for? Okay, that's why.
Or or covering deficits that right now we have no idea. We just got the proposals in and they are being evaluated.
But it is definitely going to be needed that because I don't want to allocate.
Some portion of it will be. Don't know exactly.
That's.
How much of a portion is? And again, I'm kind of jumping ahead a little bit, but when we get to the department unfunded requirements. That's where that becomes important to be sure that you're okay with that priority because. In the event funds aren't used in some of these broad strokes for capital projects. Then we may find some of those items off the.
Okay. Okay, that's why I'm worried about it. We allocated the two fifty towards it. Then we didn't use it and we just throw money away.
No, as as promised, we will be sure we do not throw any ARPA money away.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, I'm mindful to your question about where did we come up with the estimates. We we go back and look at. All of our ongoing engineering services and past engineering services, look at other engineering contracts with the county and surrounding. There is, this is a pretty unique. Project, so it's kind of hard to find something to compare it to, but for comparison, master planning services for. Southside Park based to one of the original quotes we looked at, it was going to be about a half a million dollars or something like that. So. You can see how this would quickly add up.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Funding area number two is for the Pigeon Point Boat Landing Design Bill. The city has previously budgeted eighty thousand dollars in ARPA funds for the Pigeon Point Boat Landing Master Plan. And we will apply another additional amount, eight hundred sixty three thousand should cover most of all the design and construction costs. This area assumes that a design bill contract is contingent on this execution prior to December thirty first. Twenty twenty four. And scenario number three. Is still adding the additional two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the waterfront park consulting services. And also includes five hundred thousand dollars for repaving Seo roads in the Battery Shore neighborhood. Also funding a mid-sized truck for the Capitol Project Directors. The position is funded through our about thirty five thousand dollars. And remaining seventy eight thousand. Going through that unfunded department requirements. Maybe use that remaining balance, some of those items. Scenarios. And the fourth scenario is. For the downtown drainage projects of a local match for Charles Craven or Bullard Carrret Street. And also for Battery Shore drainage projects that. These planning go on for bid for these downtown drainage projects in October. These funds could be used for any of those that exceed the budget amount. Or those.
Battery Shores. Have we already put, let me put that.
We have budgeted a hundred fifty thousand dollars, this will be another a hundred thousand dollars for that. On this occasion, it's over to that original budget.
From the. I guess, year to year budget budget perspective. I'm sure you guys, I just want to understand it. I'm just curious whether. For the capital projects, obviously, if he uses her own vehicle. And we pay them, I don't know how many miles or whatever, that would work out better from a budget perspective. It might cost us more than a lot of money, but. Year to year budget perspective, would that be a better deal?
Yeah, we could, several options we could do. I think I might give my car allowance, or we could do fan reimbursement for mileage, think our, oh, this one, we have some ARPA funds available, just do a one-time purchase of that vehicle. That way we can. So they go out right, using state contract.
And that would be ongoing costs for maintenance and different things on the vehicle.
Yeah, and I'll say what. My sort of general fund would have to pay for the maintenance of that vehicle.
We don't have an extra vehicle operating. One of the concerns I have is if if we let the fellow use his own. Pay him, there is liability and that if he gets in our act and. Then we can tap on that as well.
One of the the factors that slowed us to work to build a big engine. As opposed to the control allowance was this position is going to be out of sightings. And being structured along, it's going to be in. So ways that are under judgment. That's not somewhere that everyone would want, a personal vehicle. May have potentially require an emergency line. But we can't, but like it's not red or blue lights, but. Yeah, some margins for safety purposes. Yeah, if that's kind of those, those are our thoughts.
On that, since we're talking about it, and I don't know if this option makes sense or not, but this is a. Potentially a three-year deal with the capital improvement manager, so we may or may not have that director in place after three years. So thirty five thousand seems like a. A bit, I don't know, did we look at maybe leasing something because they're not getting put a whole lot of miles on it and maybe cheaper for us to to lease a vehicle? To accommodate opposed to purchasing one outright. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, we could, please say we should have to make sure we spend those funds by the end of summer twenty six. That's our research with ARPA funds. Like you can purchase. Save on interest costs.
We can prepay the lease to the night.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's it. That's a good one. I can look and then spare it twice. Something stand on this, but that's.
Generally, I think your lease is three years, so it could work out. But anyway, I was bringing it up.
Yeah. On the repaving of Battery Shore Roads, what was the estimated cost? We have no idea.
They, we're meeting the counties team out there on Thursday. They were to walk through it, five hundred thousand or the smaller rough estimate. And they worked through that, but we're going to have a kind of a hard number there on Thursday, hopefully. And the idea with this would be to. Enter into a memory of understanding with the county to utilize their already contracted four acres. Yeah, yes, sir.
A list of staff recommendation of department of funding requirements. Where we. Ask for departments to gather a list of. Items, so this is. The default in your. Package, we had a more similar support application from it, but. There's the staff or times that you can see here, these. Different items. We have. I can answer a little more specific questions about some of these items and. The B bonuses. Overall, kind of what we have since. Listen and. Get towards the end, get some other. Items as well.
Is there a grain scale that staff use to determine what our prioritization is?
We do not use grains, so. So this this list will be for bodies that may not. Be spent.
Money, money that we.
Right, that we may not be able to afford a capital project or or a large contract.
Yeah.
That we, that we would prefer to put on. This is the one that's going to be the catch-all to make sure all the money is spent.
Yes, that's correct.
But it's also going to be stuff we're going to be budgeting more going forward.
Again, it's it, these are unfunded requirements. Many, if not all of these, were identified by department directors going into the FY. Twenty five budget request. Exercise. And so what you will see going forward with the FY twenty six budget. Is we will have an addendum to the budget that will identify funding requirements. And so we don't have to 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 work to put together a list like this. We already know what we need that we weren't able to find in that this year.
Okay, you have some thoughts?
One scenario, are there other scenarios?
Yes, I don't have to go first, but I do want to ask a question, Scott, that I'm going to kind of know what I think my thoughts is. We discussed using. AI and chatbots or a training program for boards of commissions.
Yeah.
Have we received a quote back on what that would cost through our unit code available? Addition.
Don't think we've got an estimate. We go down to our website provider.
Yes.
Yeah. I would just like to know how much that would cost because it would potentially be a priority that I would consider as well.
No, but it's affordable, sounds different for the band, and that's the waterfront park.
Yes.
That's for the waterfront park, right?
Yeah, waterfront park and First Fridays or or Southside or.
Okay, so could we move around to different places? Okay, good.
So and and I have a process here. So we're looking at these four scenarios first, right? And then because this priority, but it is something that will have to be there to land up. What do you prioritize for the awards in here, right? I have a. I'll comment, I I just. You know, my question about the. Chambers Park was not by that, I didn't think that was very important. I'm just curious, I don't, you got figures. But my first thought is that given. The concerns we have with Chambers Park, I think we should. Make sure that we have a way of. Getting ahead of that.
Priority, which remains.
So that's my thoughts on it. That's why we made that scenario number one, even though it's. Not likely that we'll get to a construction phase time of forty seven thirty first, before to recognize that that is probably our our highest barrier.
Well, yeah, it is in scenario three, too.
The two fifty would definitely be my top priority. The rest of them, I don't see where you can people do anything. Then for. You know, I don't think we're going to get much of this.
The reason you know Battery Shores, is that all the roads there or is it just specific identified roads that need to be repaved in that neighborhood?
That's outer circle plus a few nates. What are the other roads besides outer circle?
Oh, it's the entire neighborhood is what we are working for, but it includes all of them, including Wolverine, much for today. But it's fair and and then. There's like two or three more, but it's all the outer and inner roads.
About two and a half miles.
Nate, let me ask you this real quick. Is this being proposed because of the. Emergency of the need or because it would be better to be in conjunction with the drainage project that we're fixing to? Start.
It is because of the emergency of the need of the roadway deteriorating.
Better.
My my sense on all this, I I think we need to have the two fifty for the Henry C change was lost. I'm going to repaint the Battery Shores. I like the idea of leasing the vehicle. And I would like to take care of waiting on funding department requirements, but I do. I would like to see some of this money be moved into the neighborhood revitalization. Program. Because that's kind of what the ARPA funds for anyway, for a moderate income. So. I would, I would prefer to see some of this extra money and I think close to a hundred thousand there that can be. Shifted over. But we have to get something up and running before the end of the year, am I correct?
They had contracted.
We we have fifty thousand already budgeted in there. We can lose that money.
That's a great question. Well. That's programmatic.
I guess my question, Alan, would be this, is there anything that you can think of off the top in the general fund if that could be paid for with the ARPA and the general? General fund could be for our neighborhood revitalization instead kind of offset that timeline?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's definitely some place we could use ARPA funds for. General governmental circumstances we can.
So they'd be hard, we were to try to take. You know, any additional funds from here for that specific program, even though I want to, just because of the timeline, but if there was something. If there was a way for us to identify something that we could fund that's currently being used. From the the general fund and then we could move those funds into that neighborhood violation, I would support that.
I think that's a productive thought to do a budget amendment. We have to identify what we would want to fund.
Right.
With the other dollars and and free up the other. Whatever funds we post due for, so. Question makes. How much do you want to? Look forward that effort? How do you arrive at that number?
I guess whatever it is, is I, so we have the, was it two hundred fifty thousand for the solid waste pickup? So I mean, there's one option that maybe we work. Or the fifteen leases for the police department, so. Anyway. Yeah, identifying what we would fund. And then doing the budget amendment.
One thing I'm here, which I'm concerned about is the. Pigeon Point Park or Pigeon Point Boat Landing. Oh. Are we going to be able to get, do you think we're going to be able to get any kind of grants or anything for that or? Does that mean that needs to be a priority getting this fixed, I think.
Yeah, it is possible, but if we want to enter a contract by the end of the year, usually the grant cycles are much longer, two or three months.
Pretty much. Okay, so just want to see that.
The chances of of getting a grant, I I can't predict, but I know there are grants available or projects like that. Of course, we'll be, we'll be competing for those same parts of money for our waterfront partners as well, so.
Right.
We'll be competing ourselves.
But there aren't grants for baby Battery Shores, right? And that's a city road you've got to take care of.
I am prepared to go with my thoughts. If no one else is ready. Okay, so I'll just start by saying that still. Anything here that was in regards to public safety jump out at me because I think that us, any funding that we can spend on. Either either programs or surveillance, public safety. Benefits our community and we are in need of that. So I know that we have purchased some block cameras. I saw some requests in here. When I was, when I was going through the list of priorities, anything that was in regards to a safer community is what stood out to me as a topic of the list. So out of these scenarios, which I know that this is flexible. My most favorite was scenario three, because I think that the additional funding for the waterfront park makes sense. The repaving of Battery Shores Road in my mind was either because of the level of deterioration or because it would be better to have that in conjunction with the drainage project. Either way it goes, it makes sense while we have the funds to go ahead and and move forward repaving those roads. I was not in favor of the vehicle purchased for thirty five thousand. I think looking at a lease option makes more sense and we'd probably spend less money doing that. And as far as the remaining unfunded department requirements, I do have. My preferences, obviously, I I think that if, and maybe maybe Chief hasn't gotten this far with the explorer programs. But any any additional funding for safety in our schools, I would I would favor whether it was more surveillance or security for for egress. Or, you know, making purchases that would expound on our efforts for the explorer programs for fire and police especially. So that would be my preference, but out of the list of requirements that was attached in here, I identified some that jumped out at me. And it was the Public Works Department HVAC system. I think that's important for them to have. HVAC system, not sure what the condition is, but I took it as it's. A major priority is a. Right, so you hit the top of your list there. So I highlighted that. I highlighted the police department block cameras in the dashboard. And then I looked at the. Attached request to better understand what they were seeking. And I think that brings continuity with the cameras that we already have. It brings the the data. You know, that at a. Right within reach for the officer, so I think it makes their operations more efficient and effective. So I like that. I liked what I read about the police department celebrate as well. And then the the crime analysis equipment. So. I I saw that it was basically desks, chairs and some computer monitors. I didn't know if the 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 monitors. Were better for the software that we use. I was trying to justify in my head how that would. Help us solve crime or how it would make us more effective. So I guess Chief can maybe speak to that, but. Then I. I highlighted the fire department combo tool. Because I know how important it is to have a battery operated tool opposed to the hydraulics in in certain situations. You know, you could, you could start, start working a lot quicker than taking your power pack out and your hoses and setting all that up. And then. The fire department MDCs. I highlighted that as well. Obviously, them getting information en route is extremely important and based on this, it looks like three of them were needing to be replaced. And I highlighted the last, not as important in my mind, but I can also see how it could help. Was the downtown operations, storage, shed or events. If you take that total of highlighted. Prioritizations list, you would come up with a hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred thirty dollars, which would then mean that if you took the same scenario three, you'd basically be. Doing two hundred and forty five thousand four hundred and thirty for the waterfront park opposed to two hundred and fifty, and then you'd be able to fund. The rest of that. So like I said, if I could interchange any of those priorities with something that was more of an investment into our youth, I would definitely do that. But just basing it off of these scenarios in this list, anything that was. More in regards to health and safety of the community or our employees. Came to the top of the list for me.
Yes, sir. I have a question first. Scenario two. If we bought a five acres and sixty three thousand dollars. To. Before you do the point, does that just consume everything?
It does, you know.
So. That that's one doesn't quite work. The other is that.
It it consumes everything that we design, build, contract, funds every. And you get it one time and under, and we have.
Have on my door.
And the time is a factor also.
Yes. So for uh the Battery Shores, um, we own the road, so we have to take care of it, so that's kind of a must happen thing. So that's fine for you, right? And then um Hennessy Chambers two fifty, so now we have the seven fifty. I'm not too dug in on the others, but you know, those are must do, so from the scenario, you know, we'd have to build a combination of the two. Cause I see Hennessy Chambers as a must do also. So, yeah, I agree. Um, you know, Public Works, uh, they, they, they weren't in a bad situation. They shouldn't have to have a bad situation where they're sitting in the office too. So I, you know, I definitely would be, be a HVAC systems there. Yes, I don't know if I completely understand that extraction tool, but you know, but I do, if you're trying to get somebody out of the vehicle and it's a life and death matter, that would be important. I would put that on the uh priority list for any unfunded money that's left over. And uh, we all know how important the um things that happened at Chambers Park is, and we know how hard Linda worked to make those things happen. She shouldn't be all like stuff all the way from Goddard Street down there, so certainly I, I agree with that. I, I, that's kind of for me. I mean, I, I'm, I don't have any for the others.
I put Chambers Park at top priority. Uh. I can see leasing it. That makes sense as far as the vehicle. Uh, the Battery Shores Roads, there is no way to get funded elsewhere for it. Um, the O P doesn't do anything or.
We own the roads. The seed money goes to the county's transportation committee.
So I would support Royal do theirs.
I don't know how Royal does that.
Okay, say on all their roads. I was just wondering. Okay, that's, I mean, it'd be nice. We had a way of, that road needs to be done. It's an obligation, but um.
Might use their treatmentation.
Uh, I mean, that road does need to be done. Um. Fire department, yes, I do see the extraction tool. The cameras for the um dashboards of the police department. I would like to see that uh. If you've ever seen them work in, um. We need to look at, we haven't. Downtown operations. I'd like to see him do the portable sound equipment, but she does need a trailer and a shed. There's any way we can do both. I'd like to do that. Not sure where we are. A hundred dollars I'm not adding up right now. I'm just wishful. Okay. About Battery Shores Drainage Project, that was another thing. Uh, if that's to require additional funds, we need to be looking at that.
Okay, so I have a question for Nate. So um, did we do the, the, the road and the drainage in conjunction with each other or? I mean, if we do the road and the drainage is still there, it could compromise the road, right?
So the road, the drainage is not going across the roadway. That drainage is staying. Um, but we would try to get it to where any heavy equipment will be done before the roadway was paved. But as far as drainage underneath the roadways, that drainage is still in working order. This is just to get the water out past the, the drainage that's existing.
And there's no flooding on top of the road because what is sitting on the road for a long time, I think, could compromise the asphalt too, right?
Um, the, the roadway was just paved very thin back whenever the neighborhood was first built. And there's not a lot of underlayment underneath the roadway and over time it just, it's just gonna wear out with the beating of all the traffic going in there. And um, they're still building houses today, and so there is still dump trucks and those things that are going in there that are constantly wearing the roadways. And as we went and continued to patch the potholes, then you fix that area and then new pothole forms just at the beginning of the patch. And then we patch that and it just kind of keeps going to where it looks like a hopscotch down the road.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm in favor of the two fifty for the waterfront park. Um, give or take a few dollars, the repaving of Battery Shores Roads. Kind of concerned about the rehabilitation. Um, neighborhood revitalization program. Um. We need to find some funds for that. And when we've allocated, we, we've put ourselves out there and we're doing this. I think we need to find the money at some point. When we do a budget amendment sometime later or something or whatever. I, I would like to see us have enough seed money where we can uh call together some partners uh to really make it an effective program. So. If, if staff can look at that, um, I'm, I'm, you know, I'd like to see that happen. Far as the uh, you know, a lease for the vehicle, that's fine, and then take the rest of the money and I'm just curious if staff, if some staff came up with this priority list. I don't think it's bad, but um, I, I'll kind of leave that up to the top several to fill out the gap.
We have to hear staff's feelings. Uh, that's just our, our recommendation. It's, it's your priorities, so.
Right.
You tell us if it's the right priority or wrong priority, if you want it reordered. That, that's, that's the whole point of this meeting.
And I, I feel sorry for Public Works because they, they, for the longest time I can remember, they've been waiting to get their bathroom and get the long time. Yeah, and they, and they're, they're really doing a great job and the air conditioning is important. Um, the other public safety would rise to my list, so a police and fire, that's to fill the gap, that's great. Any of what they, the, the chief thinks is the most important. To fill that gap, but I do think we need to focus and have some um funding to set aside if you want to.
So, so actually it's talking about uh to look for areas that are funded that we can, you know, shift the money.
Right.
I think that would be, you know, that, that's, that's. If we're done, you can just, you just need to come up with a number to talk for a while to do that. And then of that eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, what's the magic number?
I have a question for the chief. Uh, of these items of your needs, uh, I know there's a lot for, for you. Okay, there are a lot of them that are um, a lot of grants and things out there. Are there much grants for these items, do you think, or there's no chance to get that?
Oh, we've been trying. We scour grant websites and we get alerts for grants and we apply for a lot of grants. These items in particular, we have not found grants for.
Okay.
And we continue to look for them.
Okay, I know you're good about finding grants. That's why I was wondering why these were, you only have two items up there, I believe. Right there, a little farther down, so you had, so, yeah.
Councilman Scaletti, it takes special computers to run the monitors. We've gotten quite an education on real-time crime centers, that's why.
So let me get back to the computers because I did have a question in the proposal here. Um, and maybe you could help me with it. Um. So it was in regards to Find my notes. Okay, so high-powered computers. So the description, advanced computers with enhanced processing power, memory storage to handle large data sets in real time. Um, analytics, I saw that cost per unit three thousand, total cost six thousand, you need two camera or two computers. But when I'm looking at the quote here, uh, it looked like the cost for the computers were two thousand two hundred and fifty-nine, which bring the total to forty-five hundred. So I didn't know where the additional was coming in from. Um.
It has a way that they want the room set up and we're actually doing a site visit for one of the premier area, premier real-time crime centers. We're discussing exactly how many monitors a computer can run. So we're still looking at that and we are looking at getting it all within that budget right now, the latest way, even though we have the quotes there. That was a estimate of what we think we're gonna do it based on what we knew, but the site visit will actually help us know exactly what we need for starting our real-time.
So you shot a little high just because you didn't know exactly what you were gonna need. Yeah, okay, makes sense.
Thank you.
If this council had, I mean, does staff have a look? If the council are gonna get an idea of where we want to go?
Well, it, it would be nice if we could come up with a number that you wanted to shift uh, right? So, and I guess I, we have Claude Hicks is here. Uh, he is the executive director of the Buford Jasper Housing Trust. Um, I've spoken with him. I know they have some improvements, so some programs and funds available for I don't think they call it neighborhood revitalization, but it's basically a, a safer ride program to assist uh income-qualified property owners with repairs that are needed for their properties. And I guess one of the questions I have, and I don't mean to push on the spot, Claude, but um, one of the questions I have for you and for, for Adam, for Alan, is if we uh designate, if we come up with a memorandum of understanding or agreement with the housing trust and provide some dollars to the housing trust for the purpose of our revitalization program, does that qualify, Alan, as committing those funds by the date required?
Yeah, I think it's also in the M O U A place.
So I answer, I'll allow for a purchase order that qualifies, obviously. And is that, is that something that's doable from, from your end, Claude? I don't want to speak for you, so.
It is. Uh, and thank you for this opportunity to talk about housing. Today, we sent out over half a million dollars, which was your money, uh, and part of that, a significant part of that was for repairs throughout Buford Jett account. So that need is there, but we could certainly for the purposes of ARPA, whatever contractual obligation you need to see to fulfill that, that wouldn't be a problem with us.
So I guess my question initially would be how, how do we ensure that a hundred thousand, really, how do we ensure that any additional funds that we put into that would be spent in the city?
Yeah, so that, that would be a contractual arrangement.
It would make a restriction because that was the only place that the funds could be used.
Okay, and then have we thought about more? So how, how those funds would be extended? Would it be with uh low interest, no interest loan? How, how do we determine um? You know, which priorities are at the, the top of the list? I know that it's gonna be based on income, but just is there any further thought into um what the expenditure of these funds looks like if we were to move forward with the program?
So when we look at how we do this, we look first at prioritizing the roofs or major issue, windows, major issue, uh HVAC systems, major issues. We don't concentrate so much on things that will make the place look great. If new paint, new carpet, new flooring, we look at the central items. Uh, what we do is we grant the money to the homeowner with stipulation that if they flip the house within a certain period of time. Uh, this year, it was three years, uh, then we give the money back.
Okay, so and I know that for um some tax breaks, there's the, you know, has to be an income-producing property for five years. Is that kind of the same boundaries that we're working within here? Like to, you give them money, if they're flipping the house, they can't sell it within three years, but is there any restrictions in regards to um, what they do with the property past that, or could it just be like a, a short-term rental or?
You can choose whatever stipulations you'd like. I would be happy to work with city on, wait, let's see.
Would any of the money go towards Aaron's property?
Good question. Um, we are not opposed to that. We just want to make sure that we are providing money to the person who's actually living there. Uh, that is the number one priority. We're not funding a rental house or funding something where kids are living there and the parents are not. They're the ones that are on the deed, or they're the ones who have owned the house for three years. So again, those are situations and conversations we would have with the city. We've walked through them. Whatever you guys say, this is how we want to see it. That's all we're gonna fight by.
Say something about income property. It has to be owner occupied, right?
It has to be owner occupied, yeah. We are happy to work in any way. If it's pre-ARPA, post-ARPA, whatever way it turns out, we're happy to work with city in accomplishing this much-needed uh priority.
And these are growing up as our deadlines.
Friends, if you stipulate that you'd like to skip this one, you can certainly do that.
Scott, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, I think, you know, at first, first thought, there would be pros and cons to each, um, but I think uh a, a low interest or no interest loan would at least give us an opportunity to keep the program going, right? Um, and not having to continually, you know, fund it, or, or we could, but we'd also get that money back in a period of time. But what are your thoughts on whether it's a grant or whether it's a, a low or no interest loan?
Well, I think if you're gonna make it a program where the recipient's income qualifies, a loan of any sort would be a burden to them. And so I guess I would, I would go back and I would ask the question of council, what's, what's your intention of the program? Is your intention of the program to uh provide for home repairs for those who can't afford to provide it for themselves to continue their quality of life? Or is your, do you have another goal in mind beyond that? Because if it's just, it's gonna be an income-qualified program, I think grants make more sense. I don't think we would. I'm not sure over time the, the the payback would be enough to keep the program going. Does that make sense? Right? I mean, it would help, of course, but have to do the math.
Hundred thousand, a hundred thousand would maybe do what, three houses, four houses?
Well, it depends on what the needs are. And again, some of these houses that, that we have identified needs for are in historic district, which are not ordinary run-of-the-mill houses to put a new wall or to, to, to put new windows down. They're, they're special special groups, special windows, special process to get approved. It's, it's a more costly process than say repairing a home and, oh, see, oh.
Mayor, can we tag either Stacy or Dan or both in to answer that same question? I was to see what the, I know they have bad boots on the ground.
Let me comment first. Sure. Yeah, you know, it's, it's um, I guess it's a combination. These, these are true needs, right? Like, I mean, the roof is caving in, there's no way to go. Uh, and then you eat the burden of it being in historic district. Uh, and all the requirements that come with that. That's, that's why a lot of folks lose their ass. Because of that, that's her huge burden. So if you, if you add in that, oh, um, it's gonna be a long, you know, just kind of waited for a long.
So we found that we make repairs, certain costs go up that weren't anticipated to the same with HVAC and perhaps that resident has never seen a utility bill that high, but so we're talking with whoever the provider is that is doing this and to make sure that we're covering third places as well. One of the things that you might want to consider, this is part of a discussion, would be if we put up X number of dollars, they have to find matching funds from somewhere else. Uh, so that gives them a stake in the, in their own home. Uh, but many, many of residents are not gonna many of the residents are not gonna be able to pay a loan. They're going to be able to live better, live in a nicer place, live in something that's energy efficient, hopefully. Um, but they also are bearing the cost of the additional electrical, additional tax burden, all of those things that come with the group of house.
Well, the goal is to keep these people in the numbers. We're absolutely out.
Absolutely.
I'm all going to find a way to fund it as we can.
Over here.
And there are other partners. Go anywhere.
Let's go absolutely, absolutely. We're glad to help in any way. Thank you.
There's a special question. There's a special question I can have. What song would you like to put toward that and that we can, we can bring the worth of the budget amendment that will allow for that? And I can work with Claude on a contract for your.
But the Hix, what number you think would be a good number?
I mean, I have, it's not in, it's not in.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Reasonable, reasonable. I, I, I think, and, and I would have to put this in front of my board, but I think they would be willing to do this. If you set aside a hundred thousand dollars out of these funds, the uh trust would match those hundred thousand dollars. I'll put that in front of our board.
Uh, and.
Takes us to two fifty.
Yeah.
Set aside.
Yeah.
That, that will make a major difference within the city. Thanks. Thank you.
I wouldn't be willing to do that. I'd want to dive a little deeper in here and see where, so you take like, say, scenario three and say, where, where, where does that come from? But I'd definitely be willing to flesh that out a little bit and support a thousand dollars.
Well, yeah, many of these funding scenarios are, are, it's like almost like the only gel a little long. We don't know how much additional funding will need to order apart, but it could be up to two billion, which is why we had to wish, the safety net if you blow the unfunded requirement, right, that we would not lose the art of dollars. So if, if council tells us that, that one of your priorities is to provide a hundred thousand dollars additional for home revitalization or home repair to execute a contract with the housing trust, then, then that's, that would be one of the priorities we can make that happen.
Yeah, pretty hard to figure out what if I, very towards.
What if I, private shores of the revitalization.
But the, but the amounts for each of those are not, they can vary.
Yeah.
Alan can work a budget amendment so that, shift things around so we don't have that.
We could, we could, we could.
So we don't have that.
Well, we wouldn't have to now because we'd have a contract, so we'd have until the end of twenty-six.
For, for that.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, but with a contract in place, house of trust. That's fine.
Yeah, so we would.
Just being in my view, it's like
Don't need to act on it fast because we don't have too many meetings though.
Right, right. Which is why we have a special. Involvement. And every Tuesday. Some of the, you know, we, we made, we have to bring in some of these contracts, get rid of these contracts, then that frees up additional funds for other things.
So, just real quick, trying to recap all of this, I personally would be in favor of if we'd be it would be approximately two hundred thousand dollars for consulting for the waterfront park, approximately four hundred and fifty thousand for paving and battery shores, looking at leasing the vehicle for the Capital Projects Director, and then the remaining amount we'd be able to, should be able to fund Public Works Department HVAC system, Police Department plot cameras, Police Department Celebrate, Fire Department extrication tool, Downtown Operations Storage Shed, Fire Department MDCs, and Police Department Crime Analysis Equipment.
Do you organize those priorities, Claude?
Uh, yeah, so it was basically
Two hundred.
pri- priority, Public Works Department HVAC system.
Studies number one.
No, that's number two right now. So they have the IT system and the Public Works HVAC system. So I guess they're both about the same price. You know, you guys know better than me, what, which one is more important than the next?
IG.
Okay, so IT, all right, so there you go. So number one, and then number five, Police Department plot cameras. Number six, Police Department Celebrate. Number seven, Fire Department Extrication Tool. Number ten, Downtown Operations Storage Shed. Number twelve, MDCs, and number eighteen, Crime Analysis Equipment.
Would be your plot rather than follow the order that's in here now.
Mine personally, yes.
I might slip them to that sound system, but like.
Well, it's not a, again, I mean, just the, the purpose of this list is to prioritize the requirements. Because there may be, we don't know how much we're gonna have to devote to these, but I, we may go down the list and say, okay, we got down to number, that's, that's pretending to get more per second, right. We get down to number nine, Downtown Operations Arsenal Winter Repairs Project, a hundred thousand. But I don't have a hundred thousand. I've got ninety thousand or eighty-five thousand, which means I can continue down the list of projects that are less than a million. That's why it's important for us to understand what your priorities are, because, just because it's number six or seven, if it's a large ticket item, we may or may not have that much money to put forward. Does that make sense?
Well, and I guess, so my, my thought was exactly that, the amount that was left over and trying to have the most impact with those funds because you look at, like, a LifeTag monitor would absolutely be an essential piece of equipment for the fire department, it's sixty thousand dollars. So I'm not sure if this is the funding opportunity for that, but again, I understand why it's number four on the list. So, yes, in some cases, I, I went a little bit further down, but that was because I was trying to, to maximize the impact of eighty thousand dollars opposed to determining what was more important. And then, like I said, anything that was public safety or, you know, in regards to efficiency and effectiveness for our operations came to the top for me.
The only thing I would take into consideration there is that, in that scenario, maybe eight, five thousand dollars, maybe a hundred fifty thousand dollars, maybe sixty thousand dollars, depending on the cost, which, you know, get by. And I like your priorities. And that's exactly the kind of what we're looking for, what are council's priorities on the side of our business.
I want to ask the chief the same question. I asked the fire chief the same question. I asked the police chief. Have you sought out grants and everything for these items?
Yes, we have as well. The Firehouse Subs, a shout out to them, they actually gave us a grant for our very first LifeTag monitor. We reapply for them again this year, that cardiac monitor. We also see further down the list, the SCBA's, the self-containment breathing apparatus, our airbags. Put in for our FEMA AFG grant this year to replace thirty-five airbags. This request was for footwork in the armor clothes, but we have other grant sources out there that we are always exploring.
I know you've been very good about it.
Yeah, I know it's a small amount, but that Smith grant's always out there too. You can go and do that.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Dan.
Yeah, I'm good with the, you know, we've earned one.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe, maybe you want to open it up for any comments from?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's do it. Exactly. Do you want to have a comment, Patrick? It's the name, address.
I'm a mechanic to twelve boroughs out of Buford City. So I'm gonna speak to vision point. I mentioned at the beginning of the year, that's what should be approached for the two days. Stay clear of boat landing. You guys want to expand the park and improve it? I think that should be a separate matter. So we're gonna be, I said this a couple of weeks ago, we're coming up on a year now, and there's been nothing done there. You still got three months left of the year. There's no reason we can't get an RFQ out there and get a design build just to do the, the, the boat ramp. I'm sorry, the, the dock and, and all of that. I don't think, the, the ramp doesn't need any, any help there. And I made a suggestion at the beginning of the year as well. I said, I thought the cost was about two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars after doing an analysis of all the cam boat landings and doing my own measuring and everything else in there. And I think, Scott, you found some paperwork that was done a couple of years ago, and you got a quote that was a similar value. That's why I think, I think that's achievable, like you're in. Your contractor designed, but no doubt.
Let's see about that. I think that's, that's one of our priorities, to establish them.
Hey, Dan Solka, nine oh five, Charles Ford, Pitcher Point. I would dovetail in on Patrick's, because we sit together, we talk about these things all the time. When I saw this slide, I saw a couple of things that made me go back and relook at some things. Some big numbers here, the eighty thousand, that's already been dedicated. And then the slide indicated, well, maybe we could put all eight sixty-three into it, which would be about nine hundred, almost nine hundred fifty thousand dollars to fix the boat ramp. Probably too much. Could we do design and build? Yeah, I think they, when they did that boat ramp out at near Firth Island, they discovered there was some, some bad erosion underneath the lip of the concrete piece. I don't know if anybody's gone down in there. Looked at that, but then that added some money to it. But I looked at all that, what I said is where is the document? To give us a ballpark of what the plan is for down there. I noticed that this was supposed to be in by the end of August. Kind of consolidate and some analysis of, so we don't even know, when you look at this big number, what it is we want to do there, whether it's a two-phase thing or whether we can do it all in one shot. So I, I, you know, maybe it's the city, city manager, where, where's the consolidation, where's the recommendation for what we should be writing an RFP against before we actually know how much scenario two would have taken out of the eight hundred and sixty-three thousand. So let me, I would kind of leave it at that.
Sure. Preferences to have a design, you know, as we, have a design and build contract for that. So we can, I can, I want it just like you suggested.
And we've got the data, right?
We have started, I was presented at the work session. Sure, what work session was? Back in the summer, late summer.
You have enough left to, to put in our RFPs.
That would be attached. We're working on, the original RFP that was completed by staff was for the master planning. And so we're taking that next, currently switching that over to a design build proposal.
I, I couldn't hear that.
We need to have you all speak up better.
Did you have a timeline for when you're gonna have that scope for the RFP done?
The goal would be to have the contract to city council by November twelfth.
Is there gonna be some further public review comment on the concept for for what, for what the plan is after taking all of the public input?
I know you will look at it. That would be the, the design.
Hey, it's just one of those subjects for mayor that you need to go through.
I'm gonna look at it too. I don't know.
Yes, sir.
Probably during the design portion of the contract.
I guess, what are the requirements that have been derived after the public survey and all the comments?
I, I, I can't summarize them for you right now, but I can, they're in the, they're in the agenda packet from that meeting. We presented that to the council in a work session, full summary of those results. Those are attached to the RFQ or RFP that would go out. That's where they want to get their big numbers from.
Okay, I'll, we talked you offline afterwards. Yeah, so I've got all that printed out.
Because I, I think it need, that data needs to be synthesized a little bit. Synthesized a little bit so that you can do an RFP. I mean, the design bill people, you leave it up to them, you know, it could be all over the place. I don't, I don't know.
So the RFP will, will contain a project study, that is consistent. I'll have the survey data that we got back, we're gonna counsel general agreement that brought it forward. So it, it, it will already be reflective of some public input at that juncture, and then there will be another opportunity during the designing phase itself for the public to weigh in.
That's exactly what my understanding was of the process, and I think that's why it was attached the way that it was to the packet, where basically you had a breakdown of every single comment and how many people from Pitcher Point versus in the city. So, yeah, it was very elaborate in regards to what, what kind of feedback we got and, and what individuals, what they felt needed to be done, so.
Right.
We'll have the capital projects venture for that, right?
Oh, yes, you will be fully documented.
Anyone else? I'm Dan, you want?
My name is Daniel Blackman. I live at ten ten Duke Street. And Mr. Mayor and council and staff and city manager and Jake, I'm glad you've come around to the point where you have a scenario that wasn't mentioned here, and that is housing. The last thing that I heard regarding housing sounds very appropriate. You know, my, my, since April, I've been saying housing out of ARPA, housing out of ARPA, housing out of ARPA. So here's your last chance, isn't it? Right? To get housing rehabilitation from ARPA. So the scenario five, where you do a contract with an agency, five oh one three C, correct? The housing trust, and you might even put that solid number that he mentioned, or you could negotiate up or down. You might even say to be added to, and keep it open. In case you have more money out of some of these bids, come in low, you have money left. Where would you put it? Put it in the housing contract, because we have a contract. And after twelve years of doing contracts for Bank of America and Wells Fargo, anything can be done with that contract. And you heard basically the executive director, Claude, Claude Hicks, tell you, yes, we can do that in the contract. Yes, we can do that in the contract. Yes, we can do that in the contract. So my initial, initial reaction of disappointment in that we only had scenarios that didn't include anything about housing, has now been put aside, and, but I have to tell you that with all the politics going on, the people in the city, and especially the Northwest Quadrant and Old Commons, are watching because all of you have promised housing rehabilitation eventually, all of you. So we're watching.
We're delivering.
So Dan and I wanted to speak at the same time, and I'm gonna speak about housing, coincidentally. Joe Mack, eighteen oh nine Bowery Street. Need a the revitalization. Yeah, so I could see a whole lot more riding my bicycle in a car all over Buford. So that house with a, with the roof caved in, it's probably the same house I saw. And I saw it before anybody mentioned it. And, and when I first saw it, I didn't think it had stuck out like a sore thumb. I thought, hey, I could buy that and fix that roof myself. Because I'm not paying somebody to fix a roof, but I was wondering if it's on the stove that because I, I'm assuming this revitalization is a lot of, maybe it's strictly a home repair and somebody's living in the house, but, you know, and, and you all know all these abandoned houses. So, because it's been brought up, it's been talked about, the, there's abandoned houses and abandoned commercial buildings a few blocks outside the historic district. So I, and, and I'm wondering if it's on the stove for first-time buyers to buy some of these abandoned houses. Maybe they're too far gone, they just knocked two down on sixteen hundred block of Duke. And within, and the way they're too far gone, maybe it's the house itself or the money to repair it, but the you know, maybe, you know, we have a lot of rights in this country, so maybe somebody's right, live X number of states away, the house is abandoned, and the roof's caved in. Maybe that's their right. I, I don't know about the roof caved in, but so, and then, then, so, yeah, that, that was just my thoughts. Thank you.
I am Stacy Applegate, thirteen oh one Green Street, and I cannot thank y'all enough. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I know y'all have a lot of conflicting priorities, and I just really, really appreciate it. I know that you guys have a heart for the revitalization project, and that you have conflicting obligations, but I'm, I'm really grateful. And here's one of the reasons why. Because I know, the, the last thing I want to see is a house torn down in the historic district. Contributing, not contributing, but the best way to prevent that is to have someone in the house, somebody take care of the house. Because when someone's on the house not taking care of the house, then it gets to be on the vacant and the, the laughing good list. So, and I'm not talking about, you know, y'all putting three hundred thousand dollars to like do the house for me. I, I get that. That's gonna have to be lots of other partners. But I so appreciate, I know, you know, Bluffton, they have the, the grant program for their contributing structures, and then they have, and I'm sure they don't know about that. They have spent in two years, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in their neighborhood assistance grant. I don't know how much, but I'm sure HBO knows how much they've spent for their grant preservation. So there's all kinds of things that we can do. And I don't expect you guys to do it alone. There's other partners, but thank you guys so much for making this a priority. I think it's gonna be a huge trust builder. And I know we have other things to do, like taxes, something like that. Um, and I know we have other things to do like taxes, something like that. Um, but this is just great. So thank you so much.
Anyone else? Or Woods, or Chris? Also? Lots? Which was that, missing guidance, just wanted to go.
Please go again. I think we have reasonably warm indeed. Um, I'm hearing a hundred thousand to reallocate to a budget amendment, move some funds around and, and be able to set aside a hundred thousand dollars to work through a contract with Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust. Generally okay with the prioritization, although Councilman Sclay has some priorities he'd like to shift to the budget departments list. If there are no objections with his recommendations, we'll reorder that list by putting number one, two, changing five, six, seven to two, three, four, and making item number ten. That'll be number six. So one, two would rain the same, you know, then five, six, seven would become three, four, five. And item number ten would become item number six. Item number twelve would become item number seven. Item number eighteen would become item number eight. So I had that correct, Councilman Sclay?
Uh, yes.
And then the rest of the four.
Can you color it one more time?
Sure. So item one and two remain as is. Item five, six and seven will become item three, four and five. Ten will become item six. Twelve will become item seven. Eighteen will become item eight. And then the other priorities are shipped.
What's your name?
Thank you.
About, about, hang on a second. Downtown operations, anything there?
We got the shit.
So, so can I see that?
I'm also hearing to investigate whether leasing a vehicle would be more cost effective?
Yes.
Than purchasing outright, get up some money for other priorities that we have, which I think is smart, I think investigate. Um, I'm also hearing to investigate uh, whether you can get invited to a pretty much chat, yeah, I am on our website. So I was also investigating where the cost can continue to maintain that. Right? It's just something I believe we should investigate. Um, or Councilman Sclay, I'm clear that he, he is in favor of uh, putting aside dollars for safety in schools and explore programs and basically investing in the general where the opportunity presents itself. So I think that's a priority that will continue to carry the industry, you do priority, sure. Back to something on better ways to do that. So that's my take, boys. Am I missing anything?
I don't. We need to look at the, at your point, though.
Yeah, I don't think that becomes any less of a priority.
No, I don't.
Yeah, that's not, that's not any less of a priority, even if the funding for here doesn't make sense. There's.
The numbers are emotional. Their, their best estimate based on other historical data, we were able to, to extrapolate from, to go from what we. But as you guys have noted over the past year and a half, two years, almost nothing. Uh, construction wise, that's just that comes in that what we thought was money. Right? And that's not because we're not estimating, we're estimating directly just the price of goods and services.
Because of the ARPA funds?
So what would we do? I'll work with Alan and we'll come back to you with a budget amendment ordinance to take care of uh, most of these items. J J will continue to work on the capital project side uh, to pursue the contracts that are in the priority scenarios that we mentioned. So we know how much additional funds we have to put forward for other requirements. I believe we can use language in the ordinance that um, will provide some quality discretion and attach. We have funded our, our R S P. S and, and I, we charge instead of for next year. Stan will use funds on these items out of our.
I'll throw one more thing out there, and this is just a reminder to kind of check in on this whenever you have time. Um, if we're repaving roads and even for the roads that have paved currently that titanium dioxide treatment that adds to the longevity of the road and then reduces the, the temperature, um, something that they piloted in Charleston and they have in several other states. But um, maybe, maybe we look at that as well and just see if it makes sense for us to um, deploy those efforts here.
Yeah, I, I like those. I like that concept, uh, and that technology. Don't know if it would be possible this time because we're, we're jumping on a county contract that they already have. There'll be a mini contract to allow for the paving of, of battery shores. And so I think in terms of the type of material they're using and everything, I think that's set. Um, but going forward, we definitely will keep that in mind, I mean, without any bids for repaving roads or so.
Mr. Mayor, you got the time for a super quick question?
Sure.
So I forgot to ask, so the, in three and a half months, the ARPA money has to be spent, is it obligated, allocated?
It's allocated, it's spent, not the end of twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think this has been a very productive meeting and um, I would be, they have special meetings are required to make things happen. Kind of event, so be it.
Well, Councilman, now that you mention it, um, I, I did want to mention before we, all right, that, that may be something that we need to do. Specifically with regard to letting contracts from some of these construction projects that we're able to. We normally have a ceremonial meeting in December where we swear on the council members. Um, and really don't do anything else, but we may put you to work in the December session this year.
So if you call a meeting before that, I'm willing to come, you just, you just say when and ready to jump.
It's very clear, the rules and procedures to be about, that allows for calling special meetings on other Tuesdays as required in addition.
Well, I would, and I would like to, if we could have one in October with the housing trust. Um, I'd like to have a meeting with them, kind of just get an update, talk about affordable housing. You know, if there's an opportunity that comes up in October.
We have one days now.
I know we were considering a joint session with, for, for the, the paper ballot.
Yeah, I've got, I've got to circle back down and see what dates look good to him. I don't, I did with it sometime prior to the election because all we had, like discussed is the transportation.
Anything else? We are now, we're going to turn this meeting. We definitely want to come.